At the March 30th, 2020 Board Meeting, the West Yaga Board of Education approved a resolution to suspend portions of certain bylaws which were not consistent with Board Meetings by telephone conference or video conference. A second resolution was passed on December 14th, 2020, extending the Board's ability to meet via electronic means until July 1st, 2021. This resolution ensures compliance with amended substitute House Bill 197 as extended by the passage of House Bill 404. At this time, the Board of Education will continue its meetings by telephone conference, video conference, or other similar technologies. This meeting is a meeting of the West Yaga Local School District Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the West Yaga Local School District's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Please use the chatroom function located at the bottom of the page if you would like to be recognized for public participation. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Ramey?
Here.
Ms. Levenworth? Kathy, you're muted.
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim, do your magic. Raise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda?
We have some changes to the agenda.
No, not now. We haven't voted.
We haven't voted yet. We've added item 128A to increase in appropriation, and we've modified item 136, or 137, excuse me, to reduce the amount of contract for the doors.
I was gonna say of the doors.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Looks like our first presentation today is from Mr. Hollister.
Correct. As you know, the Board commissioned David Hollister of Newmark Real Estate of Ohio to conduct a study, a highest and best use study of the Newberry property and the Newberry campus. Tonight, I've asked Mr. Hollister to please give the Board a status report of the progress that's been made thus far and what remains to be done. David has been working closely with Sean Whalen and with Mark Richardson on this project, and we thought that it would be time tonight for him to give us a brief overview of what's been accomplished and where we're going over the next few weeks as he concludes the study. So, Mr. Hollister.
Good evening. Am I muted?
No.
No. Good.
We can hear you.
Okay, well, thank you, and good evening, everybody. So, as mentioned, I have been asked to sort of give an update as to where things stand. Everything that I have for you tonight is fairly preliminary, as the final environmental findings remain outstanding, and certain bodies of research cannot be done until that report is submitted. The final report will certainly be done by May 10, but we are all hoping that it can be pulled together by April 26. There are three sections to cover tonight: studies concluded and underway, open items, and realistic and appropriate uses. So the first section is studies concluded and underway, or put differently, what we have done and what we know now. Two critical steps involved in establishing the value of a property are determining the net acreage of the property, this is for a land property, which is what we're dealing with here, determining the net acreage of the property and assessing its environmental condition. Those steps have to occur before any other evaluation can be made. To determine the net acreage, usually what you do is you do a wetland study. The subject property is about, is little over 39 acres per Yager County records. I did a walk through the property last fall, and I saw cattails and other wetlands indicators making the need for a wetlands study pretty clear. HZW Environmental was chosen from three candidates and fully engaged in late January to perform a study. The physical examination of the property was delayed until March 4 due to the fact that it's difficult to do this kind of study when there's a foot of snow on the ground. The preliminary aquatic resources evaluations, as they like to call it, was released to the Board on the 19th. The report described one potential wetland and three streams impacting an area of about eight and a half acres. What does that mean? It means that no fill can be placed within the boundaries of the wetland without authorization from either the Army Corps of Engineers or the Ohio EPA, dependent upon jurisdiction. Development, therefore, of that eight and a half acres would likely require the purchase of offsetting wetlands acreage in excess of that amount within the same watershed. As our acreage is not thought to be prime real estate, it is likely that those potential mitigation steps would be costly enough to eliminate that possibility. So what is that, what is the conclusion? Conclusion is the net usable acreage of the property is probably more like 30.5 acres as opposed to 39 acres. The second study that was done was environmental. Property is known to have asbestos in the main building. There's also an overwhelming amount of deferred maintenance and assumed presence of mold in the main building. Cost for any contemplated rehabilitation would vastly supersede the pro forma return of any possible commercial use. In real estate lingo, any use you came, when you compare to the cost, would quickly turn it upside down. For these reasons, no environmental study of the building's structure was necessary. There was a bus garage at the south end of the property that raised the possibilities of oil and/or gasoline soil contamination from leaking and spillage. The underground boiler in the main building made the existence of underground tanks a distinct possibility. Phase 1 environmental report was commissioned by the Board late January, and it was, the phase 1 study was completed, researched the current, well, the definition, what is the phase 1? It is a study that is completed to research the current and historical uses of a property. The intent of that report is to assess if current or historical property uses have impacted the soil or groundwater beneath the property and compose a threat to the environment and/or human health. The Board received that study on March 3. The study concluded that there's a couple of clear-cut issues. There was some ground staining over by the bus garage, and there appeared to be one or possibly two underground storage tanks by the boiler room. A more rigorous or an in-depth phase 2 study was recommended to investigate these two matters. Phase 2 environmental assessment was commissioned on March 16, consisting of three soil borings plus some vapor collection in the bus garage stained area, as well as a geophysical scan of the area the underground tanks were thought to be, or to, if they weren't there, to detect soil disturbance indicative of their prior presence and removal. On-site studies were performed March 26, but the report is still pending. It should be very soon, but it's still pending. The survey did not identify any suspected underground tanks, nor did identify any definite areas of disturbed materials indicative of a former excavation for tank removal. HZW estimated the most probable location of any prior tanks, if they ever existed, and collected some additional soil samples and should have analytical results back imminently. I believe that is the outstanding step they're waiting on to complete their report. The conclusion is that although not fully definitive, although fully definitive answers have not yet been made available, excuse me, it appears that there are no underground tanks to be removed. Although were the bus garage to be fully removed, further soil analyses might be advised. If the building stays, you've got, you may have a problem with the soil underneath. If the building is removed, you probably have to use or study of the soil underneath. What may make sense with that is, I think you decide the use first before you spend any more money on figuring out what's going on with that soil, because it may be money Second section is open items. These open items are things that will need to be determined that we can't control. There are two important variables that the Board cannot unilaterally determine, as they require input and assistance from other agencies. First one would be zoning. Zoning will answer what kind of use is permitted and what is the minimum permissible lot size. Zoning is currently R1 residential, and the property is bounded on a north by AP Active Park District. And to the south, it looks like B1 commercial business, but the colors, it might be professional office, I believe it's B1 commercial business. Typical use questions that will require a resolution will be, is our use permissible? If we elect housing, what is the required per-unit acreage? If our use is different from what is the current zoning, do we require a variance, or do we have to go to bat to change the zoning entirely? A variance is much easier than getting zoning changed. And then the last question, obviously, given the local, given the jurisdiction, what is the process for that change or variance, which varies from location to location? The second open item is sanitary. How does gray water, which is storm runoff, and black water, which is sewage, how is it disposed of? And this obviously affects the possible uses for a property and the density for any use. Both use and density impact the property's economic value. An intact commercial sewage system, for example, is far more attractive to a buyer than to-be-installed individual septic tanks. The last section is realistic and appropriate uses, or what are the sensible things to do with this property? And the West Yaga School Board are both stewards of the community who also have a fiduciary obligation to their students. These two factors imbue a deep sense of responsibility that will have a decided impact upon the ultimate choice for the disposition of the property. Possible options for the end use of the driveway are presented below, but to be followed. But please keep two things in mind as we go through this. The first is that all of these possibilities are subject to resolution of the two open items on the prior page, zoning and sewage. And the second thing is, the options need not be mutually exclusive. We can have more than one use on the property. So the first use is industrial. The subject property is an attractive, flat, open property, but it is hampered by a significant distance from major thoroughfares. The industrial market is very hot right now, but a lot of it is distribution wants the ability for trucks to get to major thoroughfares quickly. The second one is flex, which is a combination of office and warehouse for medium to small users. Now, you'll have a 10,000-square-foot building that half of it is office, half of it is warehouse, and you'll have many, many different users scattered around the property in these, in these buildings and section of buildings. The third one is residential cluster development. And the fourth one is standard housing with three-acre lots, and I bring that up as sort of a pair. If you were to develop it as residential right now, you would be looking at standard housing with three-acre lots. So a more valuable use of the property would be using smaller lots. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up at this point was community center. We are acutely aware that some Newberry trustees want to repurpose the smaller buildings subject to their ability to raise funds to cover capital improvements as well as operational costs, excuse me. That concludes this section, but again, I just wanted to reiterate that, that we can't have more than one use, and that the eventually chosen direction or directions are subject to both zoning and sanitary issues.
David, could you, could you repeat for the Board what the dates were for the completion of your report, the target dates?
Let's see. It'll be certainly done by May 10, but we're all hoping that it can be pulled together by April 26. Part of that is I, we don't, still don't have the environmental report in, and once the environmental report, once we have that, I can then go to various sources of my information and say, okay, here, here's what we're up against. We have X, Y, and Z. If we were to do this use, how do you see the value? And I've had preliminary discussions with quite a few different developers, trying to gauge what the proper value would be, but that is a critical question that I can't fully engage them on giving me a value and/or qualifying their interest unless those questions are answered.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Hollister at this point?
Yeah, you had mentioned that we'd have to stick with standard zoning. We have a, there's a package plant nearby, correct? If we were to get approval to tap into that package plant, could zoning have smaller lot zoning?
That is logical, yes.
Okay. Okay. Again, one of those, one of those variables that we can't control.
Correct. Correct.
Another variable is the water that's available, because if you have a more intensive use, you have to be able to, unless the township is totally remiss in their duties, you have to be able to show that there's an adequate supply of water. And now, that probably is the case, because that school had hundreds of kids in it, and, you know, for long periods, and after-school activities and so on, but you do have to show that there's enough water, because that's the main thing which determines the size of lots, you know, because you can't just arbitrarily determine what size lots are going to be, you have to have a justification for doing that. And that's usually, traditionally, it's been the need for septic, because with septic technology, though, you don't really have major lot restrictions in terms of size. So the aquifer is the main thing that townships use to restrict lot size.
Any other questions, Board members?
I thought, I thought Bill had something.
I was just going to comment that I thought that David's mentioning about standard residential lot size was in relationship to, you could do that without having to rezone, which is what I thought there was, you know, the discussion that Dan was starting to bring up was, well, couldn't we rezone it? But I'm good, never mind.
Okay, anything else from anyone? Thank you, Mr. Hollister.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation tonight is by our high school principal, Jay Bishop. He's going to give the Board a little bit of an update on the specifics of House Bill 67, particularly as it relates to graduation requirements for the class of 2021. Bishop?
Good evening, everybody. On the March 20th, Governor Dewine signed House Bill 67 into law, and what this law did was provide flexibility to schools and students regarding the testing requirements for the 2021 school year, so for the school year, and specifically revolving around the needs of students and, and many times regarding the lack of access of, you know, the requirements and needed to prepare students for these tests this year. Specifically, the law exempted public and charter non-public schools from administering the state-required American history and, of course, exam. However, I want to say that we're decide, we have decided to still administer that test, because it will, down the road, students that take this test will have the option of completing a citizenship seal for graduation. So as we've learned, there are a lot of different graduation options for high school students nowadays, and one of them is a citizenship seal that they can earn. And in order to earn that seal, they have to be proficient on the American history and, of course, exam. So we decided that we wanted to keep that as part of our tests that we offer this year to provide opportunities for our students moving down the road. Currently, our 10th grade students are the ones that take that American history exam. And then for the 2021 school year, it permits 11th and 12th grade students who take or retake tests, and they're unable, or they're unable to take or retake, and of course, exams, to use their final grade, their final course grade, in determining the points that they would earn in lieu of taking those exams. So for example, we have a student that might not be able to take or did not pass a government exam. Let's say, for example, he took that test earlier during his junior year, during his senior year, we can now use his course grade, let's say that student got a B in the course, we can use a 3 for that course grade to give him points that might be necessary in order for him to graduate. So this actually goes across the board with all of our, our tests that we, we offer, again, for 11th and 12th grade students only. So again, this could open up doorways for students to graduate. It also permits school districts to grant high school diploma for the 2021 school year to any student on track to graduate, and for whom the principal, in consultation with the teachers and the school counselors, determines has successfully completed the high school curriculum or individualized education plan. So as you can see, it gives a lot of latitude to the schools in terms of who can graduate. However, what is across, maintains across the board here is that they may meet the local requirements, with one exception to that, and I'll talk about that in a second. And we also, the law permits a district that has previously adopted a resolution to exceed the state minimum high school curriculum requirements to elect to require only a minimum curriculum requirement for the purpose of determining high school graduation. So for example, West Yaga has elected to have 21 graduation credits that are required for a student to graduate. However, the state only requires 20 credits for a student to graduate. In this particular situation, West Yaga offers a fine arts credit, we require a fine arts credit, actually, in order for our students to graduate. This is saying that school districts can now bump down to the 20 graduation credits needed, again, by the state of Ohio to graduate. So in this particular situation, we have a student who took, actually, we have, I'm thinking about two situations where we have a student who took a fine art, however, might need an elective credit. We can use that fine art credit to serve as an elective credit that could help a student that would graduate. And then finally, we have the law that provides an alternative pathway to graduation for the 2021 school year by permitting students to qualify for high school diploma by both successfully completing the curriculum requirements as well as earning an Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. So that's a new seal, and the state of Ohio has provided the standards and the requirements in order for students to complete that readiness seal. So again, House Bill allows a lot of flexibility to schools and students so that they can cross the finish line and get their high school diploma. Fortunately, not too many of our students are going to rely on these requirements in order to graduate. Our students have prepared throughout their four years and including this year, even with the pandemic, to graduate, and there are just a few exceptions that we're looking at with the students that will benefit them in getting their high school diploma. Any questions?
It brings up an important point to remember. Because our students have been in school so much of the year on-site, and we've had a fairly strong remote program for our students, thanks to the efforts of our teachers and administrators, our need is probably not as great as the need in many districts to find an alternative pathway to graduation. It is nice, though, for us to have that at our disposal, and Jay did a nice job of presenting for you tonight, its, its major components. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't, let me see, I don't see anyone who has signed up on the chat for public remarks.
Nope.
Okay, so let's move right along.
All right, Resolution 127 to approve routine matters of the West Yaga Local Board of Education to include the April 12th meetings and our classified substitute list.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Katsalski?
Yes.
Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 128 to approve donations.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, discussion? These are very generous. Roll call, please.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 128A to approve the increase in FY21 appropriations due to you accepting this grant of the, on the STEAM grant, so I've had to increase the appropriation for this year.
So moved.
Second.
What was this for again, Karen?
Since you approved the donation of $20,000, I've improved, I've had to increase the appropriation so that they can spend that money on equipment.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Dr. Markworth?
Resolution 129 is to approve a change in the classified staff contract for the 2020-2021 school year. It's moved from...
So moved. Sorry.
That's okay, I was just gonna say moved from probationary to limited.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Resolution 130 is to approve supplemental contracts for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 131 is a routine resolution, this done annually, it is to accept the non-renewal of all 2020-2021 supplemental and service contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Katsalski?
Yes.
Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Resolution 132 is also an annual occurrence, it is a resolution to accept the non-renewal of all 2020-2021 long-term substitute contracts.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Katsalski?
Yes.
Ms. Levenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
It is my pleasure to introduce Resolution 133, which is a resolution to approve a certified staff appointment for the 2021-2022 school year, and after the Board makes a motion on the resolution, I would like Jay Bishop to introduce this individual before the Board votes.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bishop?
Good evening again. I'd like to introduce Kaylee Rodriguez. Kaylee, if you could say hello real, there we are, you pop up on the, on the screen.
Everyone, thank you, sorry.
Kaylee comes to us as a graduate from Ohio State University with a degree in biology and chemistry.
and chemistry. After securing a degree in biology and chemistry, she pursued a, a master's of arts in life sciences, chemistry, teaching where she was able to get her life science and chemistry teaching license. So a great accomplishment already having her masters. And then, um, after securing that, she was able to get a job with Solon Public Schools, her alma mater. And she came to, she comes to us with three years of teaching experience where she's taught honors chemistry and biology. You know, and I will tell you that we reached out to several individuals, some of which are on her reference list and some are not. And I will say that a lot of people had great things to say about Kaylee's teaching experience and the relationships that she builds with kids. And, um, with your approval, we look forward to bringing Kaylee on as a high school science teacher.
Is this where, is this where we get to ask her chemistry questions?
Dr. Beers?
Ask me anyway. Interviewed me.
Thank you for that introduction. That was very kind and I look forward to meeting you guys and thanks for letting me join tonight.
She also comes with a very strong endorsement from Dr. Benincasa, who did a little bit of detective work and who also, Nancy, would you like to take a moment to say something about Kaylee?
I feel like I've been threatened from many previous colleagues as we were stealing her away, and so I'm feeling a little under fire from former friends and compatriots. Kaylee not only comes to us with stunning and glowing recommendations, my goodness, across the board. She did her student teaching at Nordonia High School and has some recommendations coming from Nordonia as well. But she also, uh, was the head coach for the women's volleyball team and I believe took them to states her first year of coaching. And so she has great coaching experience, um, does a great job of, uh, producing relationships with kids and we're just, we're excited to hire her for what she'll bring to our students. We, we are very pleased, happy to welcome just her to our staff.
Thank you. Okay. So I assume we're not going to let Dr. Beers grill her.
Aw, come on.
That's absolutely a no.
So can I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Levinworth? Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorerson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Um, okay.
Mr. Katsowski?
Well, if Bill approves, I'm with him. That'd be a yes.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome.
It's great to have you.
Congratulations, Kaylee. Resolution 135 is to approve the second reading of new board policy and revised board policies that are contained in your board packet tonight.
You skipped 134, sir.
Are we, uh, are we modifying the? Oh my goodness. I'm sorry. I, I, I take that back. Let's go with 134. I'd already checked it off, so took too long with the last one. Resolution 134 is to approve the student practice replacement for the 2021, 2022 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll please.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorerson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
All right. Let's try this again. Resolution 135 is to approve the second reading of new board policy 1615 and the revised board policies that are listed in the board agenda.
Don't move. Second.
Questions, discussion?
One more reading.
Here's Katsowski's seal of approval.
For what that's worth.
Roll call please.
Mr. Thorerson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Resolution 136 is to approve the third and final reading of new board policy 75302 and the revised board policies that are listed in the board agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll please.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorerson?
Resolution 137 is amended, is a resolution to approve the bid for 2021 door replacement projects to award the contract to Capital Aluminum and Glass Corporation.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Call the roll please.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorerson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Resolution 138 is a resolution that was brought to us by, by Kathy Levinworth. Basically what this is, is a, a resolution very similar to one that the board passed in November of 2020. At that time, we were looking at the Cup Patterson Plan for a more equitable school funding program. This is now a, a, an endorsement of a plan embedded in, in House Bill one that is meant to encourage the 134th General Assembly to expedite the passage of a bill that really accomplishes much the same as what was being promoted in the Cup Patterson Plan. And that is to devise a more equitable system of, of funding schools for the state of Ohio. Kathy, did you want to say anything at this point in time and are you've been heavily involved in this initiative?
No, that covers it, I think. I gave, um, some feedback on this at the last meeting.
Correct.
That we've been to see or we, we had Senator Serino at our Zoom meeting and, um, so we don't have much more to do right now as we're waiting to see what, what kind of revisions might, might be made to the language. But this would, they are encourage, encouraging all, I think they've got 500 or so districts that have already signed on the six, what are there, 611 now? Do you ever take?
Thereabouts.
So.
Kathy, you said there was a possible second meeting?
Um, yeah, I did at the last meeting. I said that Ben and, uh, we, we haven't put anything forward yet because what we're trying to do is, is to get, um, Senator Serino has shown a, a good willingness to visit several of the districts. He's been a couple of times to Kent. And when Ravenna reached out to him or thanked him for the meeting and then, uh, he got back to them right away and his, his aide said that he was requesting a, to come and visit the school. So we're encouraging school systems to, to invite the senator and I asked Rich to, to send an invitation, uh, to come to West, West G. He's, he's, seems very willing to get better informed and, and understand what the issues are and, uh, know what's happening in our school. So, so we're taking advantage of that.
Kathy's urging I did send a, a note to him acknowledging his efforts and thanking him for what he's doing to promote a more equitable system of funding in Ohio schools.
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. So we're, we don't know, as I said, Ben, what the language might be changed. So we'll, before we even think about setting up another meeting, we'll wait to see what happens. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Did we have a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion in a second.
Don't move.
So moved.
Discussion? Any more discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Levinworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Thorerson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Thank you.
My report tonight is rather brief. I don't have much to say related to, to Newberry, certainly because, um, David Hollister has already talked to you about the status of, of that study. I do want to note though, that today marked the first day of our window of state testing here in West Georgia. And I want to give a sincere shout out of gratitude to everyone who has made that possible and who helped today go off relatively seamlessly. So thank you to our teachers, to our students, to the families of our students, um, who were able to transport some of our remote students in so they could take the tests. Um, and then also to our tech department for monitoring the situation and to our principals who've probably been biting nails, uh, day and night here as this testing window approached. So thanks to everybody who, who put so much effort into this. I also want to just underscore something that Jay said, um, earlier in, in response to a question that, that Dan Thorerson had asked. And that is that our goal this year is to provide experiences for our, our high school students and particularly our seniors that are as, as close to normal as possible. Obviously proms will look a little bit different this year with masks and some social distancing protocols in place, but our prom is on and the prom will, will proceed as long as we are permitted to do so by the health department. I know Jay's been working with the health department, not only here in Georgia County, but also in Cuyahoga County because of the site of the prom. And then also we had to make a little bit of a change in terms of logistics for graduation. We decided to have an outside ceremony to allow for a better ventilation, et cetera. There'll be so, social distancing protocols in place, but certainly it's a much more normal scene than what we saw last year where, uh, Mr. Bishop was as red as a lobster by the time we were done because he stood out in the sun for all that time. I also have to give.
Me too.
I was gonna say, I, I was just getting there. I was gonna say, I also have to give a, a hats off to Kathy Levinworth because she's, she was out there with Jay a great deal of the time and, uh, the two of them both looked like, uh, went into a tanning bed and left for too long by the time it was all over. But I, I did greatly appreciate their help. I was out there periodically, but I didn't have the, I didn't have the guts to do what they did. They were out there for a great deal of time.
It was fun. It was, it was actually.
I think it was greatly appreciated by our community. I know of no other district that I can say even came close to matching how we honored our, our seniors at graduation last year. But I think this is also going to be a very commemorable event. I think the kids are going to like it. I think the parents are going to like it and I think it's one that will, uh, will do the, the district proud. I would like to say that the first time Jay cited the, the first and last time in recent years that the ceremony took place, um, on our football field was in 2015. And I remember because I had not actually started here, but I did attend graduation that year. I attended graduation, the district that I was leaving and also attended graduation, the district to which I'd be coming. So it's, it's, uh, it's going to bring back some memories for me as well.
What, what's the date again, Rich?
What's the, the final date of graduation, Jay? I just go to these things.
Third with a backup date of the fourth.
That's right. In case of rain.
30 June. Okay.
Yep.
Sorry. I keep, I keep putting myself on mute. If there are no board reports.
Yeah. Um, let's, uh, ask everybody to read again what they sent out about the compensation study for the administration and be ready to discuss it in the next meeting.
Well, okay. I think you just did.
I think so.
Okay. So at this time, the board will adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel matters, including appointment and/or employment and investigation of charges and/or complaints as well as negotiations. We would like to invite Dr. Markwart, Dr. Benincasa and Ms. Penler to, to join us. I get a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
So moved. Second.
Uh, there will be no action taken upon return from executive session.
I need a roll call.
Are you, I was just about to ask you for one. Go for it.
Mr. Ramey?
Take it away. Yes.
Mr. Thorerson?
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?
Yes.
Ms. Levinworth?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Give me a roll call and make sure everybody's off mute.
Ben, get off mute.
That's you, Ben.
No, Ben's off mute. He's good.
Now he is. Now I am. Yeah. Turns out I.
Yes.
Dr. Beers?
Yes.
Mr. Katsowski?